Recording in progress.
Good morning and welcome to Osceola County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ask the board to call the roll.
Turner.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Custer.
Yes.
Steve.
Here.
Neimer.
Here.
Guydison.
Here.
Gregory.
Here.
All right, Mr. Ryanis, Commissioner State's come off a prayer and we'll pledge a flag.
Dear Lord, as we gather here today to conduct the county's business, we pray that you will give us the wisdom to make the right decisions, heal our country with all the divisiveness that we have going on. May you continue to bless this county, this nation. We all pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Let the meetings through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Any communications to put before the board this morning? There are none. Republic comment. Player board comments.
Yes, sir. I have a comment. I didn't think it was important to put on the agenda, but I'd like to address the live broadcast. I understood that we were gonna start videotaping but not live, that we would just check out the system and post it. And I know Mr. Lax made some of the, some progress for this, but can you share with us or?
I'm just, I'm struggling to get a time that works with the gentleman that's supposed to provide the training myself. His schedule and my schedule, it seems like we're just constantly at odds as far as finding a date. I'm hoping maybe next week, one day, maybe before we go back, that we can, uh, we can get together. But he works at Paris and with the start of the school year, he's been extremely busy and it seems like the day that he has available, we have media or something going on or stuff for him, so hopefully soon.
But you have recorded.
Not with the new system though.
No, with the old system.
We, I can video record off the owl, but the problem is the files are too large to upload onto our website. We've tried it multiple times. Two more meetings ago, I tried it again and Jody tried multiple times to put it on the website. It's just too large, you know, under the system we have, it just won't, it doesn't work. That's why I think we have to put the new system. We still have to have the, uh, social media channel like YouTube. You know, that will, will take a video file that large and be able to, uh, save it. We could just put a link on our website to that, which other platform. Thank you.
All right, any other employer board comments? Any additions or deletions to the agenda? We need to add the sale of the COA vans. According to board policy, we need to do a little more tightening up on that. And then, anything else?
I'd add the, uh, for discussion, uh, contractor, we can clear those.
Any other additions or deletions?
Motion should approve as a witness.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, no? Approval of the board minutes for September 2nd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? All right, let's go ahead and take care of the additions to the agenda that we added. The sale of the COA vans. According to board policy, we need to either value the vans at scrap price below $300. We can just get rid of them, or we could do an RFP, a sealed bid with a minimum amount. Is time table for doing that?
What would you recommend?
I wouldn't, I think they're probably worth a little more than scrap. They run, sounds like they do, but it sounds like they have some, some issues with adjustment. So maybe really need to consider a minimum amount of $1,000 or $1,500, uh, maybe even $2,000. See what we get. And, uh, why not put a minimum of $1,000 on it, maybe over $1,000 if they want to.
Sure.
And I think the motion should be, seal it as with the minimum, not how long you want it to run, bidding. Then also that motion needs to, uh, put authorizing, put a sign off of this. You did a pretty good job there.
Who seconded it, Jim?
Jim made it.
I'll second. But I think we should probably go to like 30 days.
One thousand. Yes.
When do we want the bids back?
I'd say 30 days.
Yes, no longer than that.
So that will put it back in front of the next board meeting?
Our next board meeting is October 7th.
If we're back by the 20th, which would be your board meeting's 21st.
If you wanted to approve them as a board, then I would say I invite that. Who? When, uh, first meeting?
It's the day before our second meeting.
When I just put it on the next meeting?
It's only about two weeks, two, three weeks.
Okay, so we're, we're approving the resolution right now and then we'll, we'll be opening the RSPs.
Right, the seed bids would be open.
As sealed bids.
Yeah, sealed bids. Could even say October 17th, which is the Friday. Or actually, we went a little earlier, we had bids in.
Yeah.
Push the pack out on Thursday, so we set the 15th of October.
Minimum of 1,000.
Any discussion? Okay, support to call the roll?
Mitchell.
Yes.
Custer.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Neimer.
Yes.
Guydison.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
All right, next we're gonna move on to ClearGov. Mr. Lax?
If you recall back in the spring, I requested the authorization of the board. Moved forward with entering into a contract with ClearGov, which is a software program that after sitting in all three different, um, Zoom meetings with them, the, uh, the thought was that that software would enhance our budget process, it would streamline with BSNA. That the two would work together and that was really what was intriguing to myself is that seems like it's always a complicated task with BSNA that as we work on the budget and for example, the US of the board say, let's, let's see what a 5% increase looks like for everybody. Well, we were told that ClearGov, you could enter that 5% and at the bottom, boom, that's what it's gonna do for your wages. Or if you wanna see what 3% is in a matter of a couple minutes, put the information in and get your 3%. But that would. So they, they advertised it and looked like it would be really a great thing and started putting our budget together. What we found this year as we were going through the budget and as we were trying to work with ClearGov to provide the information. Really the only thing that was able to be pushed in was the overall budget, correct, for BSNA?
Right, like our chart of accounts, I was able to give them all that to have.
And that, that transferred that early. Since then, it's been really a struggle and a nightmare for Jody and Linda as to take all 140-some employees. It has to be recreated. You have to enter all of their information into ClearGov. Their hourly rate and it's still going automatically. We were told that it would calculate automatically. You could put in when their anniversary date and when that pay increase would fall. That doesn't. Unfortunately, the system's not working the way they told us. And we have the opportunity to get out of the contract, but we have to give them 60 days and one month, so it has to be done by the 1st of October. So after spending much, much time with Jody and Linda discussing this, because it was, it was a lot of money. I just don't foresee how we can continue with this, though, because it's not doing what they told us. Basically, everything that Jody and Linda is working on now individually in the BSNA for the 26th budget, they would have to do the same exact thing in ClearGov, but then they would also have, they would have to create the, uh, I'm not a computer IT person, but they would have to create. They basically have to create the program that corrects the employee and he works for the sheriff's office. He has to put his rate in, his overtime rate, then you have to put in when his step increases are. But then you also have to build a pathway in ClearGov as far as what line are those, is that line gonna come out for each of those? Well, BSNA just automatically knows that you're a sheriff's department employee, it grabs it out of the specific line item. ClearGov doesn't do that. You have to physically spend the time to go in and say the overtime rates can come out of this line item. Regular rate can come out of this line item. Longevity pay, very tight. And Linda and Jody have just, I told them two weeks ago, just stop, don't do any more with it. They were. I don't think we would have a budget done by the end of the year if we're gonna continue with this, just because of the time, the time mistake. So I talked a little bit with Commissioner Gregory about it and he also sat in on one of the webinars with ClearGov. What they, you know, clearly what they told us in those webinars, Tony can chime in on it too. It's clearly something that we have to work on now. So I'm asking for your consideration to not renew the contract for next year.
I agree with that. Well, I'll second that.
Discussion?
How much do we save?
Well, we're not gonna save anything. We're just not gonna spend any more money.
How much are we not gonna spend next year?
$17,000 we're not gonna spend.
I, I can't. Doesn't hurt my feelings.
Saying, doesn't sound like it was as advertised or promised to make things more efficient. So why spend the money if it's not helping out?
Correct. Meaning?
I feel bad because what I like, I sat in on three different webinars and it really looked like it was gonna be able to spit out our budget for us. We could do all these fantastic things. Mark, Tony and Jody and Linda sat in on those webinars and we, I think we all walked away with it as a resource for us, but it's just not, that's not, unfortunately, it's not. It's issue you should not renew your, you can't. Not renew it for next year, so. Okay, there was a three-year, but you can get out of it at the end of every year. Okay, I should know.
Any other discussion?
I said the end of the calendar year, correct?
I was just curious, BSNA, are they perhaps gonna add any features now?
I, you're asking me, and you're looking at me. I do not.
I'm actually looking at him, but my face is.
Oh, okay.
I was asking you, thank you.
I have not heard of any new, uh, you know, features coming on with BSNA. They're still struggling to try to get the, get the law to all streamline. But last season, we, we brought that. Good job, thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, if please call the roll.
Custer.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Neimer.
Yes.
Guydison.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
All right, let's move on to your consent and payment of claims.
Mr. Scott.
Uh, I have a total of bills of $188,221 cents. Uh, total credit cards of $10,923.6 cents. Make a motion that we approve the bills of $119,785.27.
Discussion?
Anything on there that shows us finance?
I didn't hear you, Jim.
Is there anything on there that sticks out that makes it a little higher than normal?
No, everything is pretty well.
Is that new or normal?
Well, the first number I seen scared the hell out of. It's revised, it's a lot better.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Steve.
Yes.
Neimer.
Yes.
Guydison.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Custer.
Board of Commissioners, cash transfer, Mr. John Regis.
Make a motion that we approve the ten budget amendments and the cash transfer to the Urals.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Callow?
Neimer.
Yes.
Guydison.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Custer.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. There's nine items on the consent agenda.
Will the motion be approved through the consent agenda as presented? Items will through that.
Discussion?
I have a question about item number one. Originally, we talked about submitting an RFP for snow removal. And this has snowfall and insulting, and I don't know if that includes removal of snow if it gets to, you know, be piled up or, you know, if that's gonna be included in the RFP, just suburbage maybe?
Yeah, we're gonna, these are the, uh, administrative write-down. It's pretty much a sculptor work. By clearing the sidewalk, it's all part of the lots and everybody responded, wanting to mention this. So we'll look at everything. So this is a general guideline, you know, the RSP comes back from whatever contractor bids it. We'll review them and then provide it to the, to the committee hall before we, as we bring it forward. I believe currently, like when the storm gets piled up at the court, I'll say we need to send this company. Falls away, what's happened in the past, we can obviously add that. You know, just, I've never known that we've had to pay anybody a loan anyway at this point in time. I believe they pushed it off from the sheriff's office. They pushed it all down Park Street there to the west. City goes along every so often as it gets piled up and they pull it up and they molder the dump truck, it made it disappear.
So throw what's not, please. Is that an answer to your question, Mr. Guydison?
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll please.
Neimer.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Custer.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Guydison.
Yes.
Now if you have any consents, extended public comments. Okay, you are four children. Here's your name, if you'd like to get a spare.
Well, since our last board meeting, I, uh, with my colleagues here, we had Housekeeping Grounds, uh, went to the EMS building, uh, toured that. Because it was a holiday, we didn't go to the sheriff's building, but, um, also had two planning commission meetings and went to the city council meeting, which they had, uh, just a lot of, uh, housekeeping details, wasn't anything that was of vital importance. Besides that there's gonna be Oktoberfest, uh, uh, festival downtown by the brewery this weekend. Anyone wants to partake, uh, be this Saturday. Then Monday, I've got, uh, Area Agency of West Michigan, High Rapids. And then Tuesday, I've got the HHS meeting in the morning and then Richmond Township, uh, meeting. So, all right.
All right, thank you.
Well, I've got more than this, future years to say there we had Health Safety Ground, we can do a tour. Still working on a list presented for December, uh, conditions of vote, I, and maybe some ideas won't vote it. But I have something about us taking proof of the plan, so it's where we have it.
Uh, Health Safety Grounds, toured the EMS building, uh, coming off Friday morning, I'm traveling to West Branch for the MMV. And then Tuesday, I actually was, had to, my day Lucy to come and talk at her recycle, also recycle board meeting to share my insight, I guess, on the MMV, so. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Custer.
Last week and the week before, I had budget meetings. Got a West Michigan planning coming up Friday in the bar, so you don't have to make that. And you have got the MACT conference.
Very, very good. Commissioner Guydison.
Since our meeting on the second, I attended Riddell Township on the ninth. Uh, they're looking for a new deputy clerk. Uh, they're also looking for a new zoning administrator since he's retiring at the end of September. Uh, the next ACTA meeting is to be held at Riddell Township on the number 12 of the fourth. I was able to attend the second half of Lincoln Township meeting that same night. And they are purchasing 1.3 acres of adjacent property to the west and north side of the township all. They're gonna utilize that for some additional parking space. And they're still searching for a treasurer and deputy treasurer position. And according to MTA laws, they have to have a clerk and a treasurer in order to be able to pay any bills, payrolls or et cetera, so their current treasurer is going to be done as of the end of this month. So they're, uh, working hard to try and find something to fill those positions. Next week, Wednesday, I have to go to Subdivision District Health Department in Harrison. And we'll be attending the MACT conference at the end of this month. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell.
Thank you, sir. Last Thursday, Planning Commission held a special meeting, which was twofold. Was part of it was to determine if there was a conflict of interest with a member on the committee and the potash, situation, potash plant. As, as the board knows, the Planning Commission had scheduled the information meeting. And some of the members felt that, um, if we were honestly seeking not biased, neutral, fact-finding information and it, perception at minimum, look, so, um, if we had a conflict that that didn't come across, the board decided it wasn't a conflict of interest because this member would not be voting to take any action on any, anything. And so that was the first part. By the way, Mr. Gregory attended. I asked that he did. Mr. Lax attended. I appreciate both gentlemen for being here, because I want them to be aware of what, what's going on. Um, and the second part of our meeting was we decided to cancel the information meeting, but to seek the facts that we're looking for, the information we're looking for by letter or correspondence. At the same time, inviting, um, Eagle, if he could, send a member to come to our next meeting. Our next meeting, I believe, is November 4th. Is that Tuesday?
November 4th? Sounds right. Tuesday, 4 o'clock.
But again, I wanna thank you, Mark, for being here and I hope you got some. My other concern that this afternoon is we have meeting Thursday, have MoDA. And I know the committee of two, um, are gonna push that we pursue purchasing the radio station next door. Myself, Dave Johns and Sally Andrews are the Osceola County members on this board. If you know any of these people, I think it would be good that you had conversation asked about purchase. Now, I, I can't believe we could go ahead as MoDA and purchase land without the approval of this board. But I could be wrong too. Nobody wanted somebody to report the county commissioners before.
We have three representatives of Osceola County, how many are from the county?
Three. Yeah. Yeah, they have a county. Yeah, one person that's from City of East City, one person's that large and a county commissioner from Osceola. I, I, similar to that, I know there's a county commissioner from the county. I, I assume similar than, I know there's a county commissioner from the castle.
All right, any comments?
No, thank you.
Welcome. Madam Clerk.
I've been on the last, we did some conference, um, conference was in Mount Leathers. Second quarter in August. September second, I had your elections in the main seat for meetings. And we just, we have a, we have a couple of elections.
Mr. Lann.
Big thing, well, I, it's been, uh, even with all the part has been on the budget, with Tanya and your customer. Last week and a half. We haven't heard, we had, uh, whole issue with some water in the basement last week, so we ended up having to, uh, all, all the west stuff outside, looking through the process of, uh, got the basement dried that out. Not sure how exactly what happened, but looks like the outside faucet on the outside of the buildings, um, started running water. Actually, a lot of water's bladed on foundation. We've got, uh, two offices, one is district court. Super files, that, five damage. Everything else was in over office space, but had a lot of, uh, over files and such. I think it looks like the way in between our files, majority of everything is probably on the disposal, that's right. District court has requested that insurance claim be filed, if they would like all of their files that were involved, I guess, a lot of them should be, uh, I guess digitally happen back to something else other than the, the, but, uh, so we didn't reach out to M M R, we're not quite sure that files were restoration files or colored claim. Hope there's something back yet today. I'll keep you posted on that with the help of, but, Greg, I was luckily, it wasn't that new to the field, but it's, uh, probably should, I had a little discussion with Brad, maybe that's that. Maybe we should look into purchasing something, it's raining, there's all the files up off the ground, all rooms upstairs, if we spray the water, we can get that, I think it would stop.
Why, why don't we have a lot much on the option options?
Well, I think, I think what had happened, and, uh, we're not sure, but our janitorial services, they hooked into that faucet, power wash all the outside windows. And from talking with Roger, determined out of nothing, the water came out. So I kinda wondered maybe to shut the faucet back off completely, you know, over time, water started coming out. But it just so happened, I was here early, six thirty, and I was sitting in my office, like, I kept hearing something, which is kinda odd, I've been hearing stuff for a bit. So I went for a walk down the basement, the water heater, spending a hundred miles an hour, like, west after that. And then as I was walking out from where the water heater was, I noticed those office spaces, floor was discolored, the west end, every town was wet. Our office, sort of, had standing water in it. All the file boxes were soaked, it all falling over on themselves, and pretty much the same with the district court office space, so. It was kind of a mess for a little while, but, uh, we had, we had extreme restoration out of it, they keep over it, vacuuming up all the water, putting deconifiers and fans in the room. Got it dried back out, and we have all the files around here in sheriff's department trailer, we have fans running right now with deconifier. And that seems to be working pretty good, but, uh, just have to see. Seems to be ears for water.
Anything else?
Uh, okay, can you give us a quick summary of the budget process, what we're at, what our plan is?
What I would expect to see happen is, as soon as Tim is done working his magic with the budget, um, probably finance will need to review that. And then start working on some recommendations for the full board. And there'll be probably some budget requests that may come before the full board. But I would expect probably a finance committee meeting, once the budget is kind of all put together, totally defined.
Yes, assuming we get all the numbers together, so that you could bring something to the, uh,
Yep. What I would, yeah.
We should, we anticipate, Jody anticipates that she'll be able to push all the wages into the position budgeting, she's planning doing that Thursday afternoon. But I think our thought is, I'm, Jim and myself, we'll sit down and we'll look at that. Now, what's, what you're not gonna see when you get the budget in front of you, you're not going to see all the added, payroll or wage changes. It's gonna be a separate spreadsheet you're gonna look at by each request that came out. And you'll have the budget to look at. And I, I anticipate that Tanya and Jim and I, if it's really upside down, we're gonna go through and take a hard look at it and maybe try to clean up, clean up some of it. Make the numbers look better, but then rest will come in front of the board. And, uh, you'll see what the wage requests are, the changes. You'll have the wage study in front of you that we put together. And you'll just have to work at it from there to, uh, to come up with what you want to see. Request of the land, what you are gonna approve, what you're not gonna approve, and also maybe. I think that, uh, there's some items that we may wanna look at yet this year. We do know that the sheriff's office needs, uh, to replace their mobile radios and their handheld radios and all of their patrol cars. The state has come out and required that law enforcement, the way need information has to be on encrypted radio, encrypted frequency. Radios that they currently have, allow for that to be encrypted. So I did follow up with, uh, I T of the Grand Rapids, that handles the I T for the sheriff's office, as well as Macasta Sheriff's Office, and as well as Central District that. They confirmed, yes, both our county and Macasta county are not compliant, in fact, they both have failed the state audit on that last week. So we have to do that. We have to get those radios formed. So is that something that maybe we could think out of this year's budget, uh, maybe offset some numbers of next year's budget? So I think that's something else we're gonna have to look at before the end of the year. I think if we maybe can do a couple of those expenditures this year, that obviously is gonna help, hopefully look at overall on the budget next year. There's some capital things that we, we put in there to have those parking lot here blacked out, obviously, that's an easy to take out. So I think we can trim a lot of the budget off before folks do. And maybe, maybe your direction today is, no, don't trim anything off, we wanna look at it all. You guys, I guess, give us some direction on that, if you want Tanya and Jim and I to trim any of it off, or if you wanna see it as it is.
Some of the stuff, like, as you said, I mean, if we're gonna be in the red on the budget, especially like parking lot, gravel's okay for now. Yeah. I mean, I, I, I don't see any reason why some of the things, you know, they really aren't a need and a necessity, trim it, because we need to make sure you try to keep that budget in the black.
Can't absolutely. Can't the sheriff's department run lean information requests over their mobile data terminals that they have in the patrol cars? That's how, it wouldn't be over the air like a radio, but on that terminal, I assume that that's what those were for. Basically, I, I'm not, I don't know. How that all works.
Okay, someone answer that question, Greg? Um, yes, they can. They, with their M D Ts will allow them, which is secure. But the problem is, is like, when they're trying to confirm a warrant, they're talking to dispatch. It's easier sometimes to do it over the radio, and a warrant has personal information on it, so that stuff can't. But what we might be able to look at is if some of their radios are upgradable. And I know a lot of the radios are getting close to ruining the life cycle, but we might be able to upgrade some of the radios and replace, to get them out. So a little bit of upgrading, and I know even if they upgraded it, it wouldn't last super long, but at least it lets us kind of schedule them out. And we can replace them over, potentially over a longer span, because if not, they're all the same life cycle. So in seven to twelve years, we're gonna ask for all these radios again because they've been compromised. So it's a lot nicer if we can kind of do a few now, a few later. Looking in the future would be better for the county to be able to break it up, do it smaller by, jump. Kind of like computers, replace them all, it's very expensive. You can just replace one or two every year, or a few every year. Keeps them all on a different life cycle and cuts down on major expenses.
That's another big, one of the problems, adding computers to be replaced, so we, I think we got that worked out to where we dial those numbers back to try to get them to where they're just replacing numbers. Computers in the department, uh, getting, so we, that we saw.
All right, I guess for myself, since our last board meeting, I had ninety-one one authority last Monday. In the custom village, evening, I was at Sherman Township on Tuesday night. As Commissioner Richelieu spoke, he asked me to be here planning commission, so I attended that meeting also. Coming up, see, next week will be L A T, and then the M A conference. So I have this one, too. Thirty and B, yes. Twenty-eight? Um, twenty-four. All right, anybody have any other? If not, a motion to adjourn.
Oh, sorry.
All of their adjournments, please say aye.
Aye.
We scan adjournment.
Recording stopped.